Okay, welcome everyone. As interim superintendent and acting chair of the SAU 21 Joint School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order 12 pursuant to executive order 2020 oh four, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, we are confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the SAU 21 Joint Board have the ability to communicate continuously during this meeting through this platform and the public has access to contemporary easily listen. And if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, six four six eight seven six nine nine two three and webinar ID eight nine zero zero three two one seven three eight seven, or by clicking on the website address listed on the agenda. We are providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the SAU 21 office at sau21.org. We are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting. If there are problems with access, if anyone has a problem, please call six oh three nine two six eight nine nine two, extension one oh three, or email at r evans at sau21.org. We are adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So before we take a roll call, I want to officially welcome all of our brand new members to this meeting. For some of you, it's your first meeting ever, and for all of the new members, it's your first joint board meeting. So welcome and thank you for your service. We now can take the roll call.
Okay. Anthony Lang.
I am present and family is in and out.
Okay. Barbara Goodman.
I'm here and family is in and out.
Greg Parrish.
Present, family in and out.
Jason Farias.
Present, family in and out.
Jill Swayze.
Present, family in the room.
Martin Tavishian.
Present and alone.
Jermina Peterson.
Present, alone till seven.
Tom Von Jess.
Present, alone.
Forrest Carter.
Present and alone.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Family.
Jessica Brown. Is Jessica here? Kelly Huber. Kelly Huber is not here. Tricia O'Keefe. Tricia O'Keefe.
She may not have audio because I do see her. I'm not, I don't.
Yeah.
Can hear you.
Somebody might want to send a chat to Tricia for me. And I'll come back to her. Jim Kine.
Present and alone.
Rebecca Verdic. Sharon Gordon.
Present with family in and out.
Henry Marsh.
Present and alone.
Leslie LaFawn.
Present, done alone.
Nicole Seaco.
Present and alone.
Tony Delano.
Present, family in and out.
Ryan Belanger.
Present and family in and out.
Christina Kaiser.
Present and alone.
And Danielle Strater.
Present and family in and out.
Okay, we're going to go back to Tricia O'Keefe. Can you hear us, Tricia? Trish, we're trying to take roll call. We just need to have you acknowledge. Oh, she just.
Nope, she's gone.
Okay. I'm going to put her here and mark her not present at the time of the vote, so that way she shows up later. I have the roll call taken.
Thank you. So next on the agenda is the Joint Board reorganization. We want to thank Mr. Jim Kine for his extra above and beyond service during the last school year. Certainly took extra effort due to many extra meetings and communication. So thank you very much for all of your support and hard work on behalf of SAU 21.
Thank you.
Okay, so the board will be, the Joint Board will be chaired by a Winnicott School Board member this year. And the vice chair will be a Hampton Falls School Board member for the Joint Board Policy A001 Chair Rotation Policy. I'll take motions for nominations for the Joint Board Chair on the Winnicott School Board.
As Chair of the Winnicott School Board, I'd like to nominate Leslie LaFawn. I'm glad she's here tonight. She wasn't here last year for our reorganization and became the vice chair.
I know better now to not miss a meeting.
I enthusiastically second.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Is there any discussion or any other nominations?
I think you'd be great, Leslie.
Thank you.
Okay, Anthony Lang.
Appreciate it, Joe.
Yes.
Barbara Goodman.
Yes.
Greg Parrish.
Yes.
Jason Farias.
Yes.
Jill Swayze. Jill Swayze, is she here?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian.
Yes.
Jermina Peterson.
Yes.
Tom Von Jess.
Yes.
Forrest Carter.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Tricia O'Keefe. Going to mark it not present. Jim Kine.
Very happy to say yes.
Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Henry Marsh.
Yes.
Leslie LaFawn.
Sure, yes.
Nicole Seaco. Nicole, am I saying your last name correctly?
You are, yep, just right. And I say yes.
All right. Tony Delano.
Yes.
Ryan Belanger.
Yes.
Christina Kaiser.
Yes.
And Danielle Strater.
Yes.
Okay, I have that vote recorded.
I turn the meeting over to you, Leslie.
Thank you. And I, yeah, thanks. Thanks, Jim. Again, I reiterate what Dr. Killian said, you know, thank you for the guidance last year, so big shoes to fill. At this point, I need to take a nomination for the Joint Board Chair, correct? And that will be from Hampton Falls.
Vice Chair.
Oh, Vice Chair, shoot. I was trying. That was, that was the shortest chairperson around.
Leslie, it's Greg. I'd like to nominate Jill Swayze as the Joint Board Chair for the next year.
Vice.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? No, ready for the vote?
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Anthony Lang.
Yes.
Barbara Goodman.
Yes.
Greg Parrish.
Yes.
Jason Farias.
Yes.
Jill Swayze.
Upstayed.
Martin Tavishian.
Yes.
Jermina Peterson.
Yes.
Tom Von Jess.
Yes.
Forrest Carter.
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard.
Yes.
Tricia O'Keefe. Tricia, we're voting on the nomination of the Joint Board Chair would be a Hampton Falls member. They've nominated Jill Swayze.
As the vice chair.
As the vice chair. Oh my gosh, we keep doing it. Tricia, are you able to hear us?
Seems she's looking to unmute this time.
She's muted, too.
Yeah.
Seemed like she heard you, though.
I will come back, Tricia, if you can unmute yourself. Jim Kine.
Yes.
Sharon Gordon.
Yes.
Henry Marsh.
Yes.
Leslie LaFawn.
Yes.
Nicole Seaco.
Yes.
Tony Delano.
Yes.
Ryan Belanger.
Yes.
Christina Kaiser. Christina Kaiser.
Yes.
Danielle Strater.
Yes.
And Tricia, we're going to come back. Did you want to vote on this?
Just do a thumbs up if you want.
Yeah.
Okay, I see that. Some audio issues, so we'll, we'll work on the thumbs up piece. All right.
She can hear us, but we can't, she, we can hear, Tricia can hear us, but we can't hear her.
So what I'm going to do is mute everybody not speaking. We don't get the background noise. And then when I do a roll call, then you can start unmuting yourselves because you kind of know the order that you're going to call your name in, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie, may I ask, I know we have a number of new board members. Can we just take a moment to identify who belongs to which school?
Absolutely. Yep, that's a great idea. So how about for, let's start with Winnicott, our new members, Nicole and, and Tricia. Somewhere. She's there somewhere. We know she is. That's you. You're new.
Leslie, Northampton will follow your lead. I'd like to welcome Brian Bellinger and Danielle Strater.
Great, welcome.
Tom, I'll follow you. In Hampton Falls, we'd like to welcome Barbara Goodman. Thank you for joining, joining up and wanting to serve your community.
Awesome. Do we have somebody from Seabrook, maybe?
Jessica, I don't think is here tonight, um, but I'm back and and we'd like to welcome Christina Kaiser.
Welcome. And Southampton, right?
We have the same membership.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. Thanks for that, Jill. Great idea. Our next up is our presentation on equity. Is that David or Caroline?
It's kind of a lot of us. We have a number of attendees. We'll pull in right now and I can get started with the screen share. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, bear with us, with us, and we'll bring them in and get started. Yeah, presenters, if you could raise your hand.
You know what I'll do, Caroline, is I'll just work on screen sharing and if you can pull them in, or are you in Rhonda?
It's, it's much of the list here. Excellent.
I tried to work from the bottom up to, so we didn't jump people.
We did it. I think, I think we have, we brought in the whole group. Not everyone is speaking, but it's, it's good to acknowledge everyone. Okay, are we, am I, am I good to go, Dave?
Yeah, if you guys can see the screen, I think we're good to go.
Okay, excellent. I'll get started. So thank you, everyone. We are so grateful to have this time to present to you where we are with, with, with equity. We're proud to introduce our Equity Strategic Planning Process across our SAU 21 districts. The SAU 21 Equity Team led by Donna Couture and Winnicott, together with the Winnicott Equity and our esteemed alumni are here to present how we got here, our key drivers, goals, course, the policy. We feel it's important to bring you along this journey as we're just beginning this work. As you know, equity is not an initiative. It's an approach, a value system. It's about fairness, access, and opportunity. So I want to give you a little context first to explain how we got here. Two years ago, we had a student named Lydette O'Connor who did an ELO project. And her essential question was this one here. How does the curriculum disciplinary practices, social interactions determine the experience of students of color at Winnicott High School? She interviewed students of color at Winnicott. They gave her incredible feedback. Their feedback was they're not represented in the curriculum at Winnicott High School. They gave us some, some suggestions to be mindful, to be aware of implicit bias, to address the stereotypes, and to to understand that they're experiencing microaggressions at high, in the high school setting. And I'll further explain that on the next slide. That was two, not yet, though.
Okay, sorry.
I'm only at the first part. So that was two years ago. Last year, the spring and summer of 2020, we had students and alumni attend protests. They attended protests as a result of the George Floyd tragedy. They were inspired to contact us, not only contact us, but to challenge us. They said, we just left and we realized you didn't prepare us for the world. You didn't talk about equity. You didn't talk about anti-racism. You didn't talk about diversity or identity. You didn't prepare us for life after high school, whether that is college or career or military. So this, this created, this initiated the first call to action for us around race, to review the curriculum, to explore the training and conversations we were having with law enforcement, and to continue Lydette's work as far as looking at race inequity as it exists in our schools. Last fall, we worked on a policy and created a strategic framework and goals related to race inequity that we will outline for you a little later. Next slide. So first, we'd like to give you a little bit of little bit of background as far as what feedback we received. This is from the student's point of view, and then I'll turn over to David for faculty point of view. Microaggressions are statements, actions, or incidents regarded as an instance of indirect subtle unintentional discrimination against members of a marginalized group. So this could be racial, ethnic, gender, other identity, or socioeconomic status. And we've included here some examples of microaggressions. This is some of the results, some of the feedback that Lydette received in her project. So as we're moving along in this, consider how our communities, our students might commit microaggressions and might receive them. Go ahead, Dave.
Thanks. Sure, just as long as we're on this slide. I think one thing that's pretty evident on this slide is these are, these are human interactions, right? These are things that may or may not be deliberate on, on behalf of, of people. And I think just raising the awareness and the complexity that goes on in the classroom is something that's, that we're obligated to do, and it's something that's healthy for our community. I would specifically look at the middle, what, middle bottom one, ignoring microaggressions committed by others. As a classroom, as coming from a classroom teacher myself, it's, it, it happens. And, and we have situations where you, as a teacher, need to facilitate these conversations with, between student to student. And you need to, to understand and have some tools to make sure that, that we understand one another and talk it through. So I think you're going to hear that over and over again in terms of the toolbox that teachers need to, to start working here. So I'll go ahead. So exploring the term equity. I think, I, I don't think it's lost on any of us that we, we deal with a lot of different indicators of diversity here at SAU 21. And really, this presentation is aimed to encompass all those definitions of diversity, whether it means socioeconomic status, whether it means sexual orientation or identity, race, demographics, in terms, in terms of culture or practices, and even special education needs. So what we have is really inputs and outputs, right? We have a lot of different indicators of diversity. And then one of our obligations as public educators is, is to take a look at the outcomes, to take, take a look and make sure that all of us have an, an opportunity to access curriculum, an opportunities to succeed, and an opportunity to thrive here at SAU 21. Some of the ways we do that are through academic success, right? We can look at discipline referrals. We can look at access to or leveraging of supports, structural or otherwise within the SAU, access to curriculum, and also prejudice. So, you know, I think the math program review is something that's a prime example of that. We, we actually had a chance to take a look and see that certain students weren't able to access all of our curricular offerings at math. And, and we were able to actually put ourselves in a position, we're able to mitigate that or remedy that. So that's the idea. And of course, I, I think we've all seen those graphics, equality versus equity. So the next slide deals with our March ninth day. So as you guys know, we did a professional development day on March ninth on equity. And it was SAU-wide, and one of the things we did was we broke out into school-based smaller groups and had discussions about what practices we had that helped students succeed, all students succeed, and what maybe inhibited some of us or some students. And this is just one little piece of data, but I wanted to show kind of where we were at. So we asked the groups to, to comment on structures that helped or hindered equity within our schools. And over on the left-hand side, you see some of the different structures we asked about. Staff and professional learning, school climate, environment, school organization, administrative structures, curriculum development, and assessment practices. So those are the kind of the big questions we asked, right? And by far and away, the, the biggest feedback, the biggest piece of feedback we got from our staff was that we need more, these are ranked in order in priority, staff and professional learning. In fact, over 60% rated this a five, five being the most important or critical with respect to our equity practices. And so we also asked, asked follow-up questions, like what exactly do we need, right? So some of the key needs are down kind of at the bottom of the screen there. Formalized PD, back to that idea of a toolbox, right? In a classroom, I'm going to need tools to foster discussions. I'm going to need tools to work with the community. I'm going to need tools to, to talk to parents, et cetera. They spoke about curriculum review processes, involvement and support of the community. And unfortunately, somebody's picture is on, on the bottom one, and integration of SEL work. As we all know, SEL meaning social emotional learning, we've, we've done a lot of work around that. And obviously, the idea of, of connecting with one another, of respecting differences, of being able to step outside yourself and understanding a situation from another person's point of view, those are all part of the SEL work, and I think they, they fit very nicely with our, our equity efforts here. So that's what the staff had to say, and it's something that we intend to move forward with. It's a kind of a compass for us in terms of priorities. So that will bring us to Caroline.
Yes, thank you. So this is our framework and the SAU goals. Donna Couture from Winnicott helped to lead our SAU, SAU team. So S, members from the SAU and from our districts, these are our goals. The first one is about developing and adopting an SAU-wide equity policy. And I want to thank our boards for unanimously voting for our, in approving our equity policy in January. I'm going to review some of the, the underlying beliefs of the policy next. Goal two, work around, work with local police departments and SROs to ensure proper training around race inequity. David's going to talk about that. Goal three, ensure a diverse and inclusive representation of people of color in K-12 curriculum. We have our teachers and curriculum coordinators, they will be speaking about that. In addition, goal four, robust and connected professional development opportunities for staff around race and equity. Counselor and curriculum, we'll talk about that in a bit. And then finally, goal five, promote and solicit community involvement in the representation of people of color with regard to school symbolism and communication. We have a Winnicott teacher and alumni who will speak on that. So first, develop and adopt an SAU-wide equity policy. Just to set the stage here for all of us and anyone who's watching, we are committed to the following foundational beliefs, that each student can learn with adequate support at the highest levels when all staff provide equitable access and opportunity for learning and hold each student to high expectations. That's all students, whatever they're bringing to the table. That's what we're committing to. Maximizing the academic achievement of every child requires allocating resources equitably, not necessarily equally. So providing what each student needs, where they are, meeting each student where they are, not necessarily one blanket, give everyone the exact same service or support. Everyone in the district will act to eliminate disparities to prepare all students for college and career. So this is how we will all work together. We're all eliminating disparities to help all students move forward and succeed. All-inclusive and welcoming environment, it plays a critical role in supporting a child's educational goals. So this is also how we have to create this culture, this environment, to create a place where it's inclusive for all of our students, and it's welcoming.
Okay, I'm on for goal two. Unfortunately, you know, with the circumstances as they are, we haven't had a chance to meet with the Safety and Security Task Force around goal number two, which is to work with local police departments and school resource officers to, officers to ensure proper training around race inequity. That was something that was driven strongly by some of the alumni that visited us last summer. But we have had some follow-up conversations that I wanted to note as certainly opening the door to this conversation. One is, is a great resource we have, Chief Moan, Catherine Moan from, from Northampton, who has been working, actually on a statewide level, the governor's task force. She actually sent us a couple of their documents that, that they've been working on with respect to community transparency with respect to law enforcement, but also training and operations. So that's the first two big bullets. They're linked up if you want to, if you want to follow the, the links. The New Hampshire Association of Chiefs of Police, that's the second bullet, which they instituted a 2020 report, actually has, if you read through it, it actually has a number of recommendations that we can certainly dovetail into our practices through our SROs, but also just through the way we interact with our community in general. So those are, those are two great resources for you. Obviously, we intend to get the Safety and Security Task Force together again when it's safe to do so for, at least by annual meetings. And one thing that, I, I think I've, I've said this out loud, but I want to make sure we underscore it. One of the things that I'm most proud of in those meetings is the recognition of the importance of proactive steps for our students. This, this is a bunch of cops in a room, and they're talking about social emotional learning. They're talking about proactive strategies to keep kids safe. They're talking about behavior interventions. And, and, and these, these are very good conversations to hear because they're good for kids, but they're all, they also dovetail with our role as public educators. And then, of course, as you know, we do have the Sea Coast Cares team, which Caroline headed up, which has the integration of the Winnicott School Resource Officer as well. So those, those are some, some of the key talking points for, for goal number two right now. And with that, we, I think we've got Liz here for curriculum.
So I'm Liz Leaga. I'm a humanities teacher at Lincoln Aikerman and also sit on the curriculum team. Goal number three is to ensure a diverse and inclusive representation of people of color in the K-12 curriculum. And as stated throughout the presentation so far, we're in the early stages of this process. But with this slide, I hope to share both a philosophical shift as well as a concrete example of what changes in the classroom may look like. So Rudim Sims Bishop wrote that literature offers the readers mirrors, windows, and sliding glass doors. It can allow readers to see their world. It can allow readers to see their world reflected back at them as a mirror. It can allow them to peer through windows into worlds that would have otherwise been beyond their comprehension. And it can give readers the chance to open a door and step into the shoes of someone whose life is quite different from their own. And so as educators, we'd like to offer all three experiences to our students. And it's important that all students, no matter race, gender, socioeconomic status, or sexuality, be able to see themselves reflected in the books that they read. And it's just as important, though, that they read stories of people and experiences that push them beyond their own identities. Brain science now tells us that reading improves a person's empathy and a critical skill for a happy and successful life beyond the classroom. But as you can see in this graphic, educators have a bit of a challenge. So as of 2018, 50% of children's literature focused on the white experience, with another 27% having an animal as the main character. And then meanwhile, only 1% of books published had an American Indian as a protagonist, 5% Latinx, 7% Asian, and 10% African Americans. And as symbolizing this graphic and the size and the distortion of the mirrors, the stories of non-
Is she coming back?
Liz, I think you froze up.
Oh, you're back.
Okay, sorry. I don't know where I froze, but I just want to be clear that I don't think you could find a teacher that says, okay, we'll throw out all the books that we've been reading. But instead, we want to just make sure that we're off.
Liz, I can't hear you.
...to help students see that science fiction and dystopian is not just an escape breed, but often important commentary on our own world, and that certain fiction can lead to important conversations around race, gender, sexuality, society, and economic disparities. The roots of empathy can grow in these readings and discussion can in turn change a student's future.
Thanks, Liz. You were you were in and out a little bit, but we certainly got. All right, I'm gonna I'm gonna go ahead and move forward on this slide, though. And for the next one, this is the integration of SEL and Equity. And this is Becca and Laura. You guys are around.
Yeah. Hi, I'll get us started. My name is Laura Wheeler. I'm the school counselor at Lincoln Acreman. And I'm going to be addressing the first piece of this slide, which is grounding SEL in a focus on equity and how it builds a positive supportive school culture. So goal number four is that we will ensure robust and connected professional development opportunities for staff around race and equity. And social emotional learning is closely tied to that. So social emotional learning actually started in 1994 with the Collaborative for Academic Social Emotional Learning, which is also known as CASL. And social emotional learning, SEL, is defined as the process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, achieve personal and collective goals, feel and show empathy for each other, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible decisions. Social emotional learning is not how we teach, I'm sorry, social emotional learning is how we teach, not what we teach. It doesn't come in a box of curriculum, but rather it's integrated K through 12 across all learning environments and social environments. SEL can be a very powerful lever for creating caring, just, inclusive, and healthy communities that support all individuals in reaching our fullest potential. And in turn, SEL builds a positive school culture K through 12 that promotes acceptance and inclusion. That's a really powerful tool that shapes our students' experiences. And school cultures that are informed by SEL practices provide a safe, supportive, inviting, and challenging environment for all students and staff, which in turn allows students' academic achievement to evolve. So that's why we call it transformative SEL.
Thank you, Laura. So I'm Becca, and I'm going to share a little bit about why SEL and equity work with adults. As Dr. Hobbs mentioned, the the staff and faculty identified professional development in this area as a key component to, as the number one prioritized for them, way to move forward with their equity work. And our educators shape how students experience school every day. Therefore, our educators' own social emotional competencies strongly impact how our students experience school, and it can influence how students develop socially, emotionally, and academically. The work we're doing together as adults around SEL and equity, they require us to ask questions such as, what supports will help educators to examine and address their own biases? And how could educators use SEL to more effectively interact with and facilitate the growth of students from diverse backgrounds? And in consideration of how SEL supports equity, the social emotional competencies of self-awareness and social awareness, help us to reflect on existing views, assumptions, and perspectives. Reexamining our perspectives on the interactions between our sense of self and how society may view us and those around us is fundamental to creating educational equity. And allows us to consider the world from the viewpoint of someone different from us, just like with what Liz was saying about the literature. So this work is ongoing, both at the building level and at the SAU level. It's very exciting. I'm super happy to be a part of it. And with that, we will send it on over to Donna and Stacy to share some information about goal number five.
Thank you, Becca. So as Dr. Eric Killian pointed out earlier in the presentation, goal number five is is really focused on soliciting the involvement of the community, especially the involvement of representation of people of color. And in this case, what we're going to speak about is in regard to school symbolism and communication. So I think it was in August or September at the suggestion of the Winnicott School Board, when there were changes made to our our current mascot and logo. It was really important for us not to gloss over the conversation that was very rich and was had within our school community, within that larger community as well. And our school board really wanted us to take a deep dive into the research and the connection that Winnicott High School has with the Indigenous people. And so Stacy and I set out to begin to research and find members of our community that could help us in this endeavor and figure out really what was the best way forward. How do we tell the story and the evolution of our connection with the Indigenous people of our community? And so we started with the Indigenous New Hampshire Collaborative Collective. That was one group that we worked with, in particular Denise and Paul Poullet, who are the head speakers of the Kauasak Band of the Penetook Abenaki people. They've been an incredible resource for us as we've moved forward in trying to help educate not only ourselves in this research process, but ultimately, as Stacy will share in a moment, how we're going to present that that research to the larger community. It's worth mentioning that throughout, like I said, it was, I think it was August or September when we got started. And throughout the months since, we spent a lot of time having conversations with these individuals. We've also connected with our local Hampton library, our Winnicott librarian, many students who are current, and you're going to hear from two alumni students that we've worked closely with as well. So what, again, we want to do moving forward is to create something that will tell the story of our connection to the Indigenous people. And so I'm going to hand it over to Stacy so she can talk specifically about what we're trying to put together as we move forward.
Hi, I'm Stacy. So as was stated, we really talked to a lot of people, and I think we realized at the end of all of that, that we want to express that and let that be accessible to the community, so to the student body, to alum, to the school boards, to fans of Winnicott sports. So our plan is to create a video. So we're going to interview the stakeholders that we just talked to throughout this year to produce a video that's going to, you know, outline the culture of the Abenaki people, to outline the history of the mascot and the logo, and the role that that played within the Winnicott community, and also what those symbols mean to the Abenaki people today. And so our goal is to kind of have this come out in the fall of 2021, which I smile about because I keep kind of pushing that back, but that is our 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 goal as of right now. And we would like to use it as an educational piece so that people can understand and honor the Abenaki people and also the pride that they've had Winnicott and Winnicott Sports in the school within the community. And so I think we worked really closely with Mary and Karina. Were you going to introduce them, Donna? Do you want me to?
By all means, go right ahead.
Okay, so as you may or may not know, they are really the ones who started this all off this summer. And they would like to kind of share why they decided to start this work. So I will give it over to you two.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mary. Thank you so much for inviting Karina and I here tonight for the joint school board meeting. I'm going to read off something that I wrote just to hopefully stay on time. I don't want to take up too much of your time. And then Karina is going to share what she has for you. So we've been, like Donna and Mrs. Brown have said, we've been having really great conversations that have been really productive about the retirement of our mascot, and we appreciate having the opportunity to share our thoughts and our plans as well as the motivations behind what brought us to be here with you tonight. When I reflect on my time at Winnicott, I'm overwhelmed, like most of you, or or most alumni will be, with nostalgia. I took great pride in being a warrior, both in the classroom and while representing WHS at sporting events. It wasn't until I left Winnicott, however, that I realized how harmful a mascot like ours was, specifically to Indigenous peoples like the Abenaki, the Penetook, and the Wabanaki, and to non-Indigenous people like myself. I didn't realize how socially and culturally unaware and underprepared I was after graduation until I left the little bubble that is Winnicott Hampton in the Sea Coasts. Through my experiences in coursework in college and graduate school, I was exposed to the significant body of anti-mascot as well as anti-racist research that exists. And I have since incorporated this knowledge into how I now try to live my everyday life. Of course, I'm still learning, but I do feel more filled with the knowledge to understand why our mascot is harmful. And what I hope through this process is that the same awareness will be instilled within current and future Winnicott students, who will sit in the classrooms that no longer are numbered with Native American heads. Rather, students will learn who the Abenaki were and are, and what the place of the tall pines means to them. Removing this imagery is not equivalent to erasure, especially because for years, we have been asked by Indigenous peoples such as the Abenaki to retire such mascots and imagery, and instead to honor Indigenous history and culture in more meaningful and appropriate ways. I think it's about time we act and we listen. I wish that I had understood while at Winnicott that Abenaki, Penetook, and Wabanaki people are still very much present in the state because too often I learned of Indigenous people in the past tense. We believe that updating the curriculum to include a more comprehensive course in Abenaki history and Winnicott's connection to the Abenaki, for example, would only benefit the community as a whole. Retiring the imagery related to our mascot is anti-racist work, and providing context for the why is too. And we're in luck because addressing the controversy regarding the retirement of our mascot is exactly what public educators are in the position to do. I'm confident that the professional development teachers are currently engaged in that addresses equity and diversity, and inherently our mascot will only benefit the Winnicott community as a whole, and especially current and future students. Thanks so much for your time, and I'll let Karina take on her speech.
Thank you. I will also try to keep it short. So thank you for giving Mary and I the chance to speak with you all. I am a proud alumnus of Winnicott. I graduated in 2014, along with Mary. And I spent my time at Winnicott participating in clubs and playing for the field hockey and the track teams. When I tell others about Winnicott, I'm filled with pride and thankfulness, knowing I had a community of teachers, coaches, and students who pushed me to be better every day. And the teachers I had at Winnicott inspired me to do good in the world, and that led me to studying public health at Amir University. College was my first experience spending any significant amount of time outside of the Sea Coasts of New Hampshire. I quickly learned that I was not adequately prepared to have even basic conversations about race and equity, never mind be able to look within myself and be critical of my inherent bias and prejudices and how those affect the world around me. I took it upon myself to fill in these gaps by getting a concentration in identity, race, gender, and culture while in college. And during one of my first classes, the topic of Indigenous mascots came up, and it was not a debate about whether they were right or wrong. Instead, we learned about the harm that they caused, not only to Indigenous people, but to people like myself who are exposed to the stereotypical images every day. And it was at this moment that I reflected on the warrior mascot I had so proudly represented and felt disappointed. Through my continued study and independent research, I was exposed to topics and conversations about race and equity that I had been sheltered from while growing up. And I don't blame growing up where I grew up for my own ignorance. I had access to all of this information in high school, but I didn't even know where that I should be looking for it. My hope is that current and future students of Winnicott will be able to leave high school with a more complete understanding of how race and equity affects their lives and communities without having to take the college course on the subject. A big part about being anti-racist is learning and then taking action. It isn't enough to just learn about race and equity issues. You have to actively work to make it right. You have to be able to admit when you're wrong, learn from it, and then fix it. And this doesn't mean pretending the wrongdoing never happened or existed. It means acknowledging that it was wrong, changing, and then continuing to grow. And I think that Winnicott has a great opportunity to make its students ready to go into a diverse world and do good.
Thank you, Dr. Hobbs. That's all we had.
Thank you so much. Thank you to all. And you know, I do want to mention that both Lauren DeConstant and Michelle Witter here, Michelle being the principal Barnard, Lauren being the curriculum coordinator at Seabrook. And they are no small part of this work as well, even though they didn't have a speaking role tonight. And I just, I want to thank the whole, the whole group for putting this together. It's truly a collaborative SAU effort. And I think as station about where we see our work and where we see some priorities for the SAU. So I'll leave it there unless Dr. Eric Killian wants to add anything.
I would just want to echo what what you're saying as far as thank you to this group. It's, I'm overwhelmed with with this strong network that we have across our districts, in our students, our our alumni, and it's incredible that that we we were on our way and to the to the board, we're we're going to continue to keep you informed of our progress along these, as far as with all of these goals. So thank you for giving us permission to move forward with the with the policy and for your time tonight. I don't know if there are any questions. I know we have more on the agenda.
Good stuff, Cher.
I'd just like to thank you all for that that presentation. It's obviously a really important topic, and you've clearly put a lot of thought, and there's a lot of work behind you and ahead of you. So these are the types of things I think that we love to see. We don't get to see enough of this great work that you're all doing, so thanks for bringing it to us.
Anybody else have any questions?
I do. Go ahead. Not once has anyone come to the Winnicott School Board to address this. It was done without, the elimination of the warrior was done without the Winnicott School Board knowing, and no one has contacted me. I graduated from Winnicott 60 years ago. This is my graduation 60th anniversary. Not once has anyone come to the Winnicott Board. There were petitions that went around. I did not see a petition. Noticed that the Winnicott Board or the Board was mentioned several times and was not addressed. Noticed that the Winnacunet Board or the Board was mentioned several times and was not addressed. There was a board meeting that I called for a motion and it was interrupted by the. Two S A U members that stopped the motion. Those are, those are facts. And whether I agree or don't agree, those are the facts. And to have this brought up before the joint board is irresponsible. We have been members of this board. And I don't think any board here would want that to happen. And I'll let it go there.
So if I may, Leslie.
Go ahead, Tom.
So I'm looking at intent rather than process. And I think this is good intent and I think diversity, equity and inclusion are critically important. I also believe that it goes beyond Winnacunet High School to the entire S A U. And the work that all of the teachers, administrators are doing. And frankly, the work that we need to do in the community. I think there was a wake-up call. I think as I look in the mirror, I know that I have unconscious bias. I know that I'm working on it. And I do not believe that this process was a slight to anybody. I actually believe that it was excellent and courageous work by the students, administration and faculty to bring this forward. So we can have differing opinions and that's okay. I just have an opposing view.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
I was talking about the process, not the information.
Yeah, so a process and intent are important to, to tease out. Because this intent is benign and important. So that's all I was calling out.
Thank you, Leslie. David, I have a question for you. I realized that tonight's presentation was a 10,000-foot view. Into, in the direction that the S A U is going. And I think it's fantastic what I'm hearing. What I'd like to know is, will we be getting future presentations with a little bit more detail? For example, what does it mean to have a curriculum review process? What, what does that entail exactly?
Right. I think, I mean, I can answer both questions. The first question's a pretty easy yes. I think. This is, this is the, the beginning of a conversation that we wanted to have. As a kind of a collective unit. Obviously, this is going to dovetail out into individual board conversations depending on the needs. The priorities of our different schools. I mean, to every, to everybody's point. But the second question with a review to a curriculum review. It's, that would just be taking a look at really two things. One is the resources that we use within the classroom, taking a look at who they represent, how they're represented, etc., etc. But second is, I think maybe even more important, and that's curriculum adoption processes. So taking a look at when we do want to adopt a text or we do want to adopt a resource. What kind of lenses are we using in order to, to, to bring, bring that into the fold? And are we seeing it from a, from a broader perspective rather than just something that ends justify the means curricularly?
And as you, as you discover more tools at curriculum level. Is there a process to verify that the tools will work with our competency initiative?
Without a doubt, and we have a couple, a few professionals here speaking tonight that are, that are going to hold me to that, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Cole, you had a question?
Um, yes, I am so happy that we're doing this. I love this presentation. And I'm excited that it was my first joint board meeting and that's the topic. Very important that we're addressing this issue moving forward. So thank you to everybody, all the hard work on that. One question I had is, I'm curious about how many staff of color there are in the S A U. If anybody knows, just out of curiosity.
I don't, I can't answer that at this moment. But that's.
So I'm curious if there is any focus on how to recruit, retain, create an inclusive environment or staff. As well, like people of color, LGBTQ staff. Throughout the S A U, because I think that goes towards also representation for students. If they don't see themselves reflected in their staff and their teachers, it's the same as not being reflected in the curriculum. And also how do we create an environment where staff will want to stay and feel included? In our community.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I can't answer that question either, Nicole, but one, one thing that did come up. You know how I talked about the teaching and learning as from the March 9th? There's, there's a lot of conversation around the diversity of staff as well amongst our staff. So it's certainly something that is going to emerge as a priority.
My free, my screen has frozen, so if anybody has their hand up, let me know. Is there any other questions or comments?
I see one hand up.
Yeah, this is, hey, Leslie, it's Jim. I think many people know we're in the process of conducting a search for a permanent superintendent, but. One of the, I think it's just important for people to hear, just as part of that process, a number of surveys went out to. All different, different constituencies that make up S A U 21, whether it be students. Parents, staff, school board members. And it was really enlightening for me to see just how high of a priority. This topic is. And I think it was, I think you guys did a great job putting together the presentation. And I just, it was helpful for me to just kind of see it and understand what you're working on. So, thank you.
Leslie, Brian Bellanger has had his hand raised. Is it Bellanger or Bellinger?
Bellanger. Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Brian. Sorry, I didn't see you.
No, it's okay. I was trying to use the technology here. I didn't know. I, I just want to commend the presentation today. I think this is a critical, critical conversation. And I want to challenge the group as you move forward to think about how much more it is than just a mascot. You know, as you, you watch the news, there's just so much more. And you know, I, one of the comments was. Maybe we don't need to consider all the books we read, but maybe we do need to consider all the books we read. And maybe we do need to look at this as deep as we can. As we watch the news. And so I just want to echo a little bit what Nicole said. This is, this is critically important. And the more that we can do as a group, I would challenge us to look as deep as we can and look outside for resources. It's more than a mascot.
Thank you. Christina?
Um, I would also like to commend everyone. I think that the presentation was great and I think it's super important. Like, I mean, all of you have basically said, one thing that I'm wondering is. How are we kind of introducing this maybe on a slower scale to the public? Because I know that a lot of times, especially in situations where, you know, we, we don't have a super diverse population. And so introducing things like this sometimes can feel like, you know, you're, you're being hit in the head with it rather than. You know, slowly kind of like given the information to really process like this, this presentation was wonderful. And it was great to see it laid out and to understand the details of it. And sometimes it's really easy for people to understand that and other times it's not. And how are we kind of putting it out there to the public to give them the idea of. Why these decisions are being made and how they're being implemented in the right ways to kind of teach our students. But also, you know, the community at large, you know, as to what we're kind of planning.
Thank you for that, Christina. As far as the, I, I think the answer to that is little by little in different ways. As far as, if it answers, it differs by goal. So, you know, the, the, the pathway through with, working with law enforcement, that is one piece. Where we'll be working with, with them through our S R Os and bringing together a safety and security meeting. At one point, so that's, that's the pathway for that goal. Professional development with our staff members, that's something we started. Actually, a year and a half ago, little by little, where we brought in U N H and we had a, they, they put on a play. Looking at race and inequities. That was one beginning kind of toe into that water. And then, but as far as families, that is something that we need to create a communication plan. For families as far as how we're beginning to, to look at this work. But as far as, you know, work in our curriculum, that's just beginning. That's there, you know, as, as Liz Saliga was saying with her piece, that is just at the very beginning stages. So I think once that part is more, you know, they're ready to, to begin bringing some of those pieces into curriculum. That's when we'd really start communicating with families as far as how it's integrated into the units and in classes. And how we attach it to current events and communicate that with the public. Thank you.
Thanks. Can I just add, first off, I agree with everybody that the presentation is and was amazing. I do have a suggestion though, like as Christine was just saying, you know. The PowerPoint can be posted on not just the S A U site, each school. You know, every district could have it on their website for one thing. But the other thing too is, and, and I think one of the things we're seriously lacking in all of our schools. Is the, the media approach to it, like getting an article out there on, you know, to the papers, those kind of things of. What we're working on as a group, as a whole S A U. Because it isn't, we don't want to, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we want to just hit the parents and that bit. We want to kind of make it a community thing because we're all charged to educate. It doesn't say just educate kids, but it's educate our communities. And like Christina said, how do we get them? To be, you know, and Nicole, how do you get people to come here? To work here if they can't live here and feel included and accepted. So needing to get that whole community on board, not just our schools and parents and students, but the community levels. And I think dealing with the police is great, but maybe a presentation to the Rotary, maybe a presentation to, you know, the rec department. Maybe a presentation, you know, like, and getting it out there into. The community and, and there, and let them run with it too. Do you know what I mean? So that you're actually asking all of our shareholders to join. Just, I mean, a thought.
Thank you. And that, you know, I'm, I'm kind of jealous of the, the S A U 16 community. They have. Oh, I'm going to lose, I'm not going to remember the name right now, but they have a whole nonprofit organization that looks at equity. And brings in different stakeholders from, from the communities. So maybe, maybe that's something that we'll start here too.
Yeah. Well, and maybe having them come here and speak, do you know what I mean? And it would, it would fire up some people to do one. So, yeah.
There, there is a group in Hampton that has kind of started that and they've communicated with the S A U 16 group. I know it kind of stalled out a little bit with COVID, but I would imagine it will pick back up again.
Awesome. That's great. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Good work, guys. You really, I think we, as, as everybody says, we appreciate it all. It was, it's an amazing, and it's an. It's an amazing undertaking. So we appreciate that. Thank you. Our next one is the approval of minutes for the minutes of January 26th, public meeting. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Jim.
My second.
Thanks, Joe. Any questions or comments, corrections? Nope. Can we get a roll call then, Rhonda?
Anthony Lang?
Yes.
Barbara Goodman?
I'm going to abstain since I wasn't here.
Greg Parrish?
Yes.
Jason Perius?
Yes.
Jill Swayze?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Jermina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Forrest Carter?
I'm abstaining. I was absent.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Tricia O'Keefe?
I'll abstain being a new member.
Jim Kind?
Yes.
And Becky Burdick is with us by phone. Becky? She just needs to unmute herself. I will come back to her. Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Henry Marsh?
Yes.
Leslie LaFond?
Yes.
Nicole Seiko?
Ane.
Tony Delano?
Yes.
Ryan Bellanger?
Abstain. I'm a new member.
Christina Kaiser?
Steen.
And Danielle Strater?
Danielle? I'm going to abstain. I'm a new member. Thank you.
And I'm going to go back to Becky Burdick.
Yes.
Okay, I have that vote recorded.
Thank you, Rhonda. At this point, we have public comment from anybody in attendance. Do we have any? I don't see any, but. Rhonda, do you see any?
I don't see anybody raising their hand. Just a reminder, if you're an attendee at this meeting and you want to make a comment, just use the raise your hand feature. And we will give you permission to speak. As of now, I'm not seeing anybody. It looks mostly like the people that were in on the presentation. Of course, there are a few others. So. If anyone does, I will let you know, Leslie.
All right, thank you. Number six, we have policies. We have a second read and adoption.
Let's say, make a motion to approve the second read and adoption of the nine policies as presented.
Thank you.
Second that.
Thank you, Henry. Any questions or concerns, discussion?
Leslie, Leslie Gregg, do we have to vote to withdraw the policies below as well?
I believe so. Or don't, wait a minute. Go ahead, Rhonda.
The policies being withdrawn were withdrawn by the N H S B A that are a result of the passage of the policies that you're passing. But I, I didn't because it, you know, one determines the other.
Okay.
Okay, we, the reason I ask is we did vote to remove policies before. I just wanted to confirm.
I can certainly add that into the motion.
Do you want to do that, Greg?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be more comfortable with that. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any issues with that?
Second.
All right. Any other discussions? I'm just reading on the other screen. That's why I look like I'm, yeah. So.
I do all the time on here.
Oh my God, I know.
Okay, so I have Tom as the second on that?
Yes, please. All right, ready for a roll call?
Anthony Lang?
Yes.
Barbara Goodman?
I'm going to abstain.
Greg Parrish?
Yes.
Jason Perius?
Yes.
Jill Swayze?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Jermina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Forrest Carter?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Tricia O'Keefe?
I was wondering if I read the policies, even though I wasn't on the board, should I abstain? Because I wasn't present for the first reading?
That's up to you if you want to abstain. The, the first read was, it was all done under public. This is at the point now that the board is actually approving these policies. This is the final phase, so.
I think you can vote.
Okay, I'll vote in the affirmative.
Jim Kind?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Henry Marsh?
Yes.
Leslie LaFond?
Yes.
Nicole Seiko?
Yes.
Tony Delano?
Yes.
Ryan Bellanger?
Yes.
Christina Kaiser?
Yes.
And Danielle Strater?
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
Thank you. The next one is the calendar revision, and I believe that was just to change the February vacation, correct?
That's correct.
And that's so that it goes with 90 and everybody else around us, because Mass and Maine were on the week that we picked. All right?
That's right. The D O E recommended the prior week and that's the, the calendar that we presented to the board last fall. However, we were informed that that's the same week as Maine and Massachusetts. And the D O E recommends that we move the week to the, the week after, starting on the 28th. And yes, that would be in line with S A U 90 and. And yes, that would be in line with SAU 90 and SAU 16 where our students go to SST.
Perfect. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the revision of the 2021, 2022 calendar.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? All right, roll call then for me, for me, please.
Barbara Goodman?
Yes.
Greg Parrish?
Yes.
Jason Farias?
Yes.
Jill Swayze?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Jermina Peterson? Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Forrest Carter?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Tricia O'Keefe?
Yes.
Jim Kine?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yeah.
Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Henry Marsh?
Yes.
Leslie LaFond?
Yes.
Nicole Seaco?
Yeah.
Tony Delano?
Yes.
Ryan Belanger?
Yes.
Christina Kaiser?
Yes.
And Danielle Strater?
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
Thanks, Rhonda. Our next one is the SAU windows and siding bid. There's an extra special window in Rhonda's office, so I think we need to add the bid up. So other than that. Does anybody want to speak to it or are we all set with it?
Leslie, I can.
Oh, there you are. Hi, Matt.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, sorry for the background noises, uh, some arguments over touching toys.
If you put them both in a closet together with no toys, whoever lives, you get to educate. That's it.
Perfect. That's.
Yep.
That's my parenting style.
I like it.
So, um, as part of the long-term maintenance plan for the SAU. We did identify two projects that did need to be addressed with the SAU Central Office. Across the street from Winnicott. Those two projects were siding. The, the existing wood siding was, was starting to rot. And did, did need to be replaced, so we did opt to go with a vinyl siding. Additionally, the windows have reached end of life and the majority are not functioning. They, they won't open. Or in some cases, you can get them open but can't close them. So that obviously presents some safety concerns. They've also, they're, they're approximately, they're in excess of 30 years old. So. We have budgeted for those two projects as a combined project. It, it makes sense to do those projects together because when, you know, the deciding does need to be removed in order to. Install new windows, so it just made sense to do them together. So we have budgeted funds on the last two budget cycles. So we are at the point. Where we are looking to complete the project. So we did issue an RFP this spring. We did and received three bids, and we are recommending a ward of bid to Ridge Runner Construction in the amount of $75,970. And this would come from the SAU unreserved fund balance where those funds that we had budgeted. Were, were set aside. So I'd be happy to answer any questions in regard to the window and siding project.
Matt, will this be done this summer?
Our hope is that it will be done early summer.
Great.
Matt, it's Greg. I forget, is, are the windows full replacement or? Just replacement windows?
Yeah, these are, these are a full replacement. I will note that these are for all the windows except for if you're facing. The SAU, there are some very large windows at the front of the building. Those will not be replaced. That, that, those are some very large. Custom windows that would be cost prohibitive to replace. And, and they, and there's not the same issues as far as opening and closing with those issues.
And is the siding going to be removed or will the vinyl be just put over the top of it?
I believe that, well, not I believe, I know the answer to that. The, the rotten siding will be removed. And that, but where the siding is in, in, or where the existing siding is not rotted. I mean, it'll be over the existing siding. You'll also note there are two deducts there, and that was for the removal and replacing of the sheathing and the soffits. And by not, by deducting them, we're, we're not removing, we're just covering. Those items as well. We worked with our roofing consultant, ARM, and they, they advised that. To, to go that route.
Okay. Any other questions on it, guys?
Yeah. Hi, Leslie.
Go ahead.
Tony. Hi, um, I just wanted to confirm a couple of things, Matt. Each of the bids have the same windows? We, did we specify the window type?
So yes, we.
And same for siding. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Tony. So yes, we. So we, we used, I referenced ARM. They actually put together the specifications and they. And they did include specific materials which were, was the siding and the windows. So it wasn't a situation where there was a, there could have potentially been a difference in quality, which is what I'm guessing you're.
Exactly.
You're heading.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Particularly with this type of.
Do you expect there?
I'm sorry, Tony.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying it, particularly with this type of work, it's important to be, compare apples and apples and. And specify the, the quality of materials because there can be a wide range when, when working with. Roofing, siding, windows, you, you, there, there's just such a wide range of quality and pricing.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm doing new windows and new siding in my house right now. I see a big difference between Ridge Runner and the others in terms of the siding. That's, that's a big difference. The other, and I'm curious why. We got a no bid on the windows from JJS. Any idea?
Yeah, so JJS specializes in siding. So we, we, when we spoke to contractors, we encouraged, even, even if they weren't, if they only want to do one or the other. We encouraged them to bid for just one, and we could have conceivably utilized two different. Companies depending on how the bid results came out. So had JJS come in lower. Than Ridge Runner, we could have used them for the siding and Ridge Runner for the, for the windows. As far as the price differential, you know, there's a, there is a slight very, you know, variance, you know, or. I'd say a real variance between Ridge Runner and A1 and JJS. However, we, we are very comfortable with Ridge Runner. They've, they've done, actually a fair amount of work recently for us. They, they did the Northampton roof last summer or the summer before. They, they did a roof in Southampton. And we've been very happy with the quality of their, their workmanship and, and the, and the quality of the materials. ARM will be on site and actually managing the construction process as well. So we do have that advantage further, so. All of our contractors were pre-qualified. Obviously, anyone could have bid. It was, is a public bid. But we, we actively sought out in-qualified, specific contractors.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's great. Did we, did we contract with ARM to manage this project?
Yeah, so ARM was, was, so they, they. They created the, the specs. They evaluated the bids with us. And they'll be on site during construction to manage the project, so.
And what was that cost?
That's $5,000.
Okay, thank you.
May have been 5,500, but, so don't quote me on it, but right around 5,000.
Won't hold you to it.
There's an error. Sorry, Matt. Is it an error, the last line?
The last line of.
51 plus 47. Just check that. Somebody check it. A1 siding, their total, their total price. It doesn't matter because you're not selecting them anyway.
Yeah, I mean, it is a high bid regardless, but. Yeah, I mean, doing the math quickly on my phone, it looks like it's off by $3,000. But the, the, the important item is the individual.
Yep.
Bids and regardless, it's still, they're, they're still higher. So I'll verify the numbers.
I'll stop. Thank you.
Back in the office.
You're fine, Tony. All right, anybody have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Rhonda, for me.
Motion made by Brian and seconded by Tony. Is that correct? Anthony Lang?
Yes.
Barbara Goodman? Greg Parrish?
Yes.
Jason Farias?
Yes.
Jill Swayze?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Jermina Peterson?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Forrest Carter?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Tricia O'Keefe? Tricia O'Keefe? Give me a thumbs up. I see it. All right, Jim Kine?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Henry Marsh?
Yes.
Leslie LaFond?
Yes.
Nicole Seaco?
Yes.
Tony Delano?
Yes.
Ryan Belanger?
Yes.
Christina Kaiser?
Yes.
And Danielle Strater?
Yes.
All right, I have that vote recorded.
Thank you, Rhonda.
One note, my apologies. I do have an answer on that math. Question. It's the, it's because they were bidding for one project only versus. A combined both projects, they, they lowered their price if they were awarded both. So that's why there was that differential. Because they'd be on site, they have that existing labor, so they cut us. They would have had we awarded a slight discount.
Thanks, Matt. Number seven, process for interim superintendent goals and evaluation. Is that David or Caroline?
That one I can cover. Thank you. So I posted there the, my interim superintendent goals from junior to June. I worked on these with Mr. Kine back in. We agreed on these goals as far as return to in-person learning and planning ahead for, for students to recover from any. Issues with learning loss or social emotional needs, our communication, the second focus area. And then identity. And identity as far as working with the. The SAU building level administrators or school boards to make recommendations as far as how we work together. And how we are autonomous. So we identified these goals. I think this is really a point of information. However. It is something for the board to, to consider as far as how to, how to conduct the superintendent evaluation. Clearly, this is a unique time. However, I think it's important for, for the board to consider. To evaluate, you know, me and my role, even though it is a, a six-month term. Those of you who've, who've been on the board in the past know that the evaluation for the superintendent is. It can be a longer process. Sometimes it, you use an, an online process. Almost like a survey providing feedback. So that's something for, for the board to consider.
Leslie, may I make a comment? Yeah, you know, can I give a thumbs up? So, so I'd like, so thank you, Dr. R. Kelly, for bringing this up. I, I believe, although I may be wrong. That it's one of our policies that we, that we give the superintendent evaluation each year. So I think it is important. And, and Dr. R. Kelly, and I also think that you deserve our, our feedback. You know, I, I appreciate all the work that you've been doing. My recommendation, Leslie, would be that the operating, the OC, along with you, come up with a recommendation on what to do this year. For the evaluation and then to share it with the joint board. I, I'd like that as a, as a process.
I like that. That's fine. Anybody else?
Can we do that sooner rather than later? Because Tom kind of touched on one of my questions. Will we use the same process and. Forms that we created last year for the superintendent search using the goals that were just defined?
Yeah, I think maybe like Tom said, we should go, you know. Get together and do that. We can do that next week or whenever. But yes, I think, but I do think it has to be a unique, we, we might. Have to tweak some of that, don't you think? Where it's a six-month interim that. You know, there's some things that I'm sure we don't need to do, and then there's others that we might want to put in. I don't, that's just my opinion. But yeah, I think we should get together.
Yeah, I agree. And I would, this year may be unique. I would keep that North Star of what the process can improve to be for. Next year so that we don't kind of fall totally off track.
Absolutely. I agree. Okay.
Leslie, one more thing. It's Greg. One thing I'd like to reiterate here, and I believe we adopted it, is. The evaluation will be done by the board members who've worked with. Dr. R. Killian, in this case, for at least six months prior to the evaluation. Now, I know it's not going to be quite six months, but. I don't know if the new board members would qualify based on that conversation from a while ago.
Great, that's, that's correct. That's always done. And then, yeah, there's a bit challenging, obviously. There's, given the circumstances and timing and. And so, Dr. R. Killian and I did talk about potentially doing, you know, some, taking some of that survey-related information. And, and incorporating that. I think it's a great idea to do it at the, for the OC to figure it out and. Kind of run with it and go from there.
I would agree with that.
Uh, Leslie, you have a meeting on Tuesday, May 4th for the operation committee. And. I would think that we would charge the operation committee to come up with their guidelines for the final evaluation. Which would be due by May 25, which is our next joint board meeting. How does that sound, Greg?
I, I'm fine with that. I just want to be, my, my, my goal here is to make sure that we give Dr. R. Killian. The evaluation that, that we normally would under, under our normal circumstances. She does that, she's working hard, she deserves that, she's working hard. So that's kind of my goal here.
Leslie, I think you're on mute.
Leslie, you're on mute.
Well, you didn't hear me swear, so that was good. I'm sorry. So I just, yeah, it's number one, Henry. I know. You, yeah, because you read lips. My concern is that if we don't meet until the 4th, Tom. Will that give us enough time to get? Out to the, everybody, the evaluations in which to get back the results to the joint board on the 25th?
Yeah, I mean, there, there could be a separate meeting of the OC as well. So however you want to handle it, my only point was that. It's going to be hard for a group this large to, to narrow down the domains and update the form. Looking to get a smaller group involved that I know and trust like the OC. I have that recommendation to you in order to, you know, push out the evaluation form so we can aggregate the information and provide Dr. R. Kelly the feedback.
Okay.
I just do think it's important that we do it. It's a policy, number one. And number two. You know, everybody deserves, you know. I just do think it's important that we do it. It's a policy, number one. And number two, you know, everybody deserves, you know, feedback, so.
Absolutely, I totally agree. So, Henry?
A part of that is that when the evaluations come in, they're collated, and the board chair meets with the, well, in this case, the interim superintendent to go over the results pretty much prior to the SAU joint meeting on the 25th. It can be within that week or whatever. I just want to clarify a couple of things here where we have so many new members that haven't gone through this process.
Yeah, that is correct, Henry.
Thank you, Henry. So, yeah, Tom, be in touch with me, maybe if you end up doing one beforehand or whatnot. And then, but if not, do it on the 4th for your regularly scheduled OC meeting.
I'm, I'm not on the OC, I was delegating.
Oh, I see. I was the chair of the OC guys, so let's go.
The OC isn't reorganized yet. Two boards that haven't met after the election, they will be meeting next week, and then they won't do their committee appointments. So after, after next Thursday, all of them will meet and then have reorganized, and then we'll know who the five OC members are.
All right, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest Tom be the chair so that, you know.
Here. So one of the other things, so Rhonda, that's absolutely true. If for some reason it needs to happen before, I think we all agree that the current OC members can represent until the reorganization happens.
Okay.
That is correct.
All right, thank you, Tom. All right, the next one is superintendent search update.
Sure, I can sound off on that.
All right.
I feel like I've given board updates along the way, but I know, I recognize we have new board members here. So I'll just kind of give a little bit of a narrative of where we are. We put together a robust committee of 16 in February. And these obviously consisted of teachers, parents, community members, administration as well. And we kind of kicked the search off late February and really got down to some training in March. The first week of March, we focused on determining and prioritizing characteristics of our intended superintendent. And we developed a rubric, if you will, of some of the qualities that we were looking for in a way to assess application packets. So that was the bulk of the committee work in early March. In order to inform that, we obviously sent out surveys, community surveys, student, student surveys, and we sent out a digital survey to the, to the joint board. We also did community forums where we had listening sessions then. That was early March. Second week of March, March 8th, we did interview training and looked at a few sample application packets and made sure that the committee had a wherewithal in terms of just looking at an application and determining, you know, whether, whether they were high quality or not. We did not meet this past week. I think we're kind of in a holding pattern right now, waiting for the applications to come in. They did extend the application due date until April 3rd. So I think that's when the work is going to, to ramp up again for, for the superintendent search committee. A quick note, we did agree on the front end of this thing that Jim Kime, being the joint board chair, was going to chair this committee, this search committee as well, and continue through even after Leslie's appointment. Leslie, I would extend the invitation. I think I've got Jim's permission to extend the invitation to you to attend any and all meetings moving forward as the joint board chair, just to, just to see how things are going and weigh in when you need to.
Yes, thank you. I agree. Thank you, David. Sorry, unmute me.
David, it's Greg Parrish. Did you, did the committee lose any board members due to elections that were representing their communities?
No, no, we did not. Good question.
Okay, good. That's great. Thank you.
We were, yeah, we were careful to make sure there wasn't.
Look at that.
Yeah, we looked at that as, as part of the evaluation.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? I don't think we need to go into non-public, do we? For anything?
No.
No. Well, then, Henry?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, I don't think we need a roll call, do we? Everybody raise their hand. All right. Thanks, everybody, and thank you to all the new board members. Great seeing the old board members and looking forward to a great year. Bye, guys.
Bye. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.